The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by KGTV Channel 10 in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, February 12th, 2020.
Good morning and welcome to the regular scheduled White Pine County Commission Meeting. Good morning and welcome to the February 12th regular scheduled White Pine County Commission Meeting. First item is the pledge of allegiance. Would you all please stand? Laurie, would you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take one moment of silence, your meditation, whatever. Yes.
Meditation, is that it?
These were just turned in to me. Did anybody lose a set of keys outside? Do you know where they're at, Karen?
They're on the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk, anybody?
If not, I'll just go take them to the library.
Yeah, good idea.
Thank you.
All right, then the open of the meeting is public comment. Do we have any public comment this morning on anything we have coming up with the meeting? Anybody got any public comment? Please come forward, state your name, please.
My name's Andrew Hayes, I'm an animal control officer. I was called and told you guys were deciding on whether to keep the dog breeding free or not, and I was told to give some input by the people that give me grant money. And the input is, for rabies, it's not going to be a big difference, and I'm still in regard to get rabies vaccination records. In the future, though, when I acquire grant money, some of that grant money will have to do with licensing animals, and if you guys wish to stop licensing them, you won't be receiving that grant money to help out. I've already received over $35,000 in grant money to help get cats, dogs, fags, vaccinated rabies. And I'd like to continue doing that for you guys, but if this goes where we don't do it, then there might be some money I'm not going to be able to get and use for you guys. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, George, it sounds like you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 1B3, you're to consider renewing the need for dog owners to license their animals. You cannot afford to give up revenue that helps mitigate the cost of animal control enforcement, rabies concern, possible overpopulation of animals by some poor owners, and I want to share the same concerns as the animal control officers from the city. You guys are losing revenue, and you come up with these new taxes, you've got to clean up your act, don't give up your revenue. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2B1A, you're to consider selling county-owned land for less than fair market value. The commission is selectively enforcing the law. The county has no business competing against the private sector. I and other property owners don't stand a chance. We have paid market value for the land that we have, and we have our legs counted from under you and from under us, but you folks, your building inspector, I repeat, is the biggest single detriment to housing and growth in this county. I'll address that. I remind you that you have paid for appraisal in the past for land and then sold it under appraisal without giving the public proper notice that you would accept a lower amount. When I went, let's see, when I made an offer to purchase county property that did not sell, I was told no, because the property was worth more. You people are not appraisers, and it appears that you don't want to sell to a veteran. You can't have that selective enforcement, selective treatment. On your agenda item 2B1B, there was nothing in the packet for a member of the public to see what the commission may do. You need to have it complete. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2C1B, you are to consider approving policy 8.2.7 regarding authorized county vehicle. That policy's been in place for years. Where's the clause termination for intentional violation of 8.2.7? What are you going to do if there's a DUI and a hit and run? Oh, it's okay, he didn't mean it? Mr. Chairman, I reported to the County Commission and City Council that the building inspector appears to be using the city county vehicle normally used for inspections for personal use. He was in Ureco on September 15th, 2019, with his wife. Is his wife or others authorized and adhered to be in the government vehicle? Does the building inspector get a fringe benefit? Is the usage computer reported as taxable reported on the W-21099? Is there a policy that allows employees working away from their base to drive to the nearest community to have lunch? Are they required to take lunch with them? Is there a separate policy for the building inspector, and is he allowed to take others with him for fear of traveling alone? Mr. Chairman, I want to remind you that he's refusing to give me a building permit on a home I have, and I want to re-roof, and yet he has yet to correct the deficiencies on my building at 570 Altman, which still leaks. That guy doesn't know what he's doing, or he's being vindictive.
Okay, George, that's your three minutes, thank you very much.
Are you sure?
Yeah, she just gave you a signal.
Well, I didn't give you one, yeah. I don't want, I need some answers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We're going to try today to adhere to the three minutes, and we have several people that are probably going to be reading presentations, and we're going to be, try and keep it right after two minutes, even though it's not public comment, it's a public session. We need to keep the meeting rolling, so, public comment, thank you, George, it's always three minutes, and that's what we stand by, and so with these other presentations, as you get to that item, we're going to be requesting each entity to stay as close to that as they possibly can, because it's not public comment, it is a public hearing. So, let's, let's keep it at that, if anyone's going to be thinking about coming up on theirs, maybe they should maybe condense their presentation to get all their facts in, but if it goes over a little more than three minutes, it's a public hearing, so that'll be okay. But, Joe, let's just try. All right, is there any other public comment? Any other public comment before we start? Okay, last call, hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on. We're at the 9:05, right now we recess the regular scheduled White Pine County Commission, and we'll open the 9:05 Fire Commission Meeting, it's on page two, and the first item on the Fire Commission Meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment addressing the Fire Commission before we start? Ian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your item 1A6, invitation from the City of Ely to evaluate contract for fire protection services and other modifications, I think you need to let the present agreement settle in a little bit. I'm seeing raises in ambulance calls and fees, and I'm really concerned about what you guys are doing to the community. At one time, there's a volunteer service, there's a flat fee, and that was it, but now, things are going through the roof. I would ask that you hold off on any kind of agreement at this time and see where we're at with what we have going on right now. Also, the last item, eight, where you're going to be considering the character of the fire chief, I'd like that at the end of the meeting. I want to stay here for the landscape, but I only have so much time that I can be away from my business, and that particular issue may take some time.
That'll be, that'll be a closed session, George?
The end of the meeting, hopefully.
Well, no, we'll be doing that, well, just a second, Mike, can we do that at the end of the meeting?
Well...
It's kind of your quest, it's just on item number eight?
Yeah, you can do it at any time during the Fire Commission. If you reopen the Fire Commission meeting, you can do it then, you can do it now, but the situation proportionally for the public is this is a closed session, so the public won't be able to participate in that discussion with their fire chief anyway, because it's just an annual review prior to its permanency. So, if there's any comments regarding the fire chief, now would be the appropriate time to make it.
Here's your answer, George, if you have any...
No, I have no comments, I just want to, I want to be here when Landgate gives their presentation, and you guys may be quite long with the fire chief, that's all.
Oh, I see. Exactly. When is that, where is that?
The Lions Gate is under my, I'll be reading the letter from them, under my, under my item.
Oh, they're not going to present a...
They're going to come here, hopefully, February 26th meeting, they just asked me to read their explanation, and I'll be reading that during my item.
I didn't notice that in the packet.
It's under my name, so that's where you're, so anyway, we'll just continue the meeting as is, and we'll, we'll go ahead with the closed session. I don't know, I'm going to ask the commission, what do you guys want? Do you want to do that at the end of the meeting, or do you want to do it at the end of the Fire Commission?
Well, it sounds like the only reason they wanted us to do that was so we could be here for the presentation business instead of presenting.
Yeah, it's not a presentation.
Yeah, it seems like, no, actually, no. We'll let you go on as is.
Yeah, leave it the way it is.
Okay, well, here's my thought, just real quick, because we have several items that are going to come up and probably be discussed at length, and we can reopen the Fire Commission meeting at the end, but to make this roll and, and I think our evaluation at the breadth at the end of the meeting will be okay.
I just don't want to make him sit this, sit here all...
Well, he can do, yeah, all right, we'll just keep it the way it is, we'll just, that's fine. Okay, any other public comment on the Fire District? Okay, item number one, on page two, is discussion update on Fire District progress, Brett North, Fire Chief, Fire Chief of City of Ely.
Morning, number one. Good morning. You got my notes in the backup material for progress, you want me to elaborate on anything?
I don't have any questions unless anyone else does.
Okay, and then our Fire District round call report for January, we had 25 medical, five vehicle accidents, nine control burn modifications, and zero fires, so...
We've got this.
Yeah, we got it.
We've got these.
Okay, so, yeah.
I'm sorry.
For later item. About all I've got.
Just let you know that we did EMS, we started this last weekend, 30 hours, so the city and county, county people were there, so if you see RMTs, tell them that by eight Saturday and Sunday, did 30 hours, so tell them thank you, because that's a lot of hours, but, but and I was there too, it's tiresome, but it was a good training, and I think everybody enjoyed the training, other than ours. Also, the, we're working on, on firefighter one class, we're just trying to gear up the State Department Marshes office and get that done, most of it's still online, and skill courses will be done in-house, and we're trying to, we see how we can operate that, yet we have to go to an outlying area, but we'd like to have a number of people there, you know, it's just hard to drive long ways for one or two people and be able to put on that, the physical part of the, the training, it's better than much, it's like setting up ladder, you need more and more person for two people, stuff like that, so, I've been working with Brett on that for quite some time, but we're working on that. George's question on us raising the rates, actually, the base rate staying the same, we've had a lot of the rates there that has raised a little bit, we're bundling some of the rates, like Level 1, Level 2, we used to break it out and charge for oxygen, AED, meds, those are all added on, now they're bundled together, better...
Yeah, just for clarification, this is what the city has done regarding EMS.
EMS. So, better aligns us with what the insurance companies want to see, Medicare, Medicaid want to see as the level response, they don't like all these little add-ons, they'd rather see that bundled in as this type of care, just like your EOBs, so better aligns us with that, and it safeguards us from having audits done, when you add all these little things, you're, you might be challenged with audits, and you might have to pay some of that back to Medicare, Medicaid, just because they say, well, no, we're not going to pay it, so, this, this is a safeguard at the same time. And that's, and the rates haven't been changed, I think, since, I believe, like, around 2012, don't quote me on that, but they haven't been changed, we were sitting at about 25%, 30% percentile in the nation, this is bringing us up to about 70%, 75% percentile in the nation, so, there is change, the way it's bundled, it is, there is, looks like a drastic change, but it, there is a little change, but not drastically. We're still thinking about our community and the people that we serve, so, that's the reason for the rate change. Is there any questions for me? I think I kind of caught up on the reports that was passed in, so...
Appreciate you guys working together and having the dialogue.
We, we work really well, and actually, working with outlying fire departments, going on calls, the collaboration, the communication of, our responding to outlying areas, and if we're not needed, they let us know, we turn out and re-roof and get ready for the next call, it's been working well, when we do show up together, we work well together, and things have worked really well.
Excellent, thank you.
Any questions for me?
Good job on your backup.
Good job, guys. Thanks, and thank you. Good training one day.
I enjoy this discussion for possible action, the approval for White Pine County, purchase the White Pine County Fire Protection District's 2019 Jeep Wrangler Unlimited, VIN number 7291, at a price between $28,284 and $35,757, with funds coming from either the general fund, beginning fund balance or contingency. Elizabeth?
Thank you, and I have in the backup, I worked with Brett to go ahead and obtain quotes through Kelly Blue Book on what the 2019 Jeep Wrangler would be valued at, so it's from $28,000 to $84,000 to $30,732, if you traded it into a dealer, and if you're selling it to a private party, it would be somewhere between $32,885 and $35,757. The Fire Commission expressed a desire to go ahead and transfer this vehicle, or sell this vehicle to the county, so that it could be better utilized as part of the fleet vehicle, so that maintenance would check it out to different county employees who need transportation, and I'm just wondering at what value you would prefer to place on that as a sales price to the county?
You wouldn't got an idea of what they'd like to do, you see the, you see the figures, there's probably about a $7,000 difference between low and high, according to the Blue Book, that we got between 27 and 32. It's a county, it's kind of, the county has the fire district, but the county has also got...
Yeah, we're just, we're just...
We're just training and...
We're just ownership, we're training for value. Do you remember how much we paid for it in the first place?
Ah, no, I don't.
Because it seems like the simple answer might just be to take into account the depreciation of having it, you know, do whatever it's going to do, it's mostly been sitting.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think it's hardly been used.
I'd like to get as close to the original value as I can.
It has 37 miles on it.
Yeah, so...
So, I think that we would go a little bit higher...
Yeah, I don't see any issue.
Then, I mean...
So, would it be your desire then that we go ahead and identify the original purchase price and pay that for it?
No, I don't, I don't think that, Mr. I'm thinking maybe...
And we got some depreciation.
Yeah, I think the Blue Book takes into account that depreciation, I'd be comfortable with somewhere on, on the private party scale, between the 32.8 and the, and the 35.7, somewhere in the range of $34,000.
One at 31, at 34. The money when it's received comes back to the general fund?
It goes to the Fire District.
It'll come from the general fund, go to the Fire District.
Okay.
Yes.
To be utilized within the Fire District's budget, correct?
Correct.
So, you know, it's all, we're putting money here, but I'm trying to think with all the, with all the projects we have in line with the Fire Districts, with the different outlying areas and stuff like that, and we're going to need money, so, rather than, because we have it, rather than go with a lower price, if we put more money in there, that can go into the Fire District's funds as far as their upkeep of the buildings, you know, we've got several items that need to be done, that's pretty costly, so, we know the vehicles, and we got no miles on it, but it is, still, when you're driving a car off the lot, so you go around the corner, it depreciates, I mean, so, we want to be fair to the Fire District, we want to be fair to the county, but the funds that are used, that'll be a later item, that's just an idea to have out there, so, as we think about what dollars we want to put in to this, because it is going to the Fire District for their use, let's, let's don't be cheap, but let's don't go crazy.
I like the $34,000 number, Shane.
I would make the motion to have the amount given.
I'll let you finish your question.
Okay, $34,000 going to the, as a sale to the county, from the county Fire District.
Motion by Laurie and a second by Ian, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, now they'll call for the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion hours, thank you. Item three, discussion for possible action, the approval of the monthly financial reports for January 2020, Elizabeth?
Thank you, and that information is in your backup, if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, I would look for approvals to up the reports like previous.
Any questions? If not, all this party motion will be dismissed.
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Travis, second by Shane, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion hours. Item four, discussion for possible action, the approval of budget transfers within and between functions or programs within a fund that do not increase the total appropriation of the fund, or adjust for approved grants slash agency fund.
Thank you, and this is just your regular report on how we are adjusting the budgets between line items, and we want to keep things balanced, and work with the fire chief on this, if there are any questions on the, if you have any.
Anyone got a question?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Laurie and a second by Ian, Ian, you've heard the discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion hours. Item five, discussion only, discussion on the training slash logistics for ARFF certification and identifying the funds as requested by the Airport Advisory Board. Brett North, Fire Chief, and Vice Chairman, Airport Dean, Travis, go on.
Yeah, so, the Airport Advisory Board asked me to bring this forward to the board, so basically, and 30,000 foot level, and Brett can explain further, he did some research, but, from Lan, and maybe if Lance is here, you want to come up too? Basically, what carriers are telling Lance is, if there is, you know, a chance of getting air service back here, this would need to be in place, but then, also, it's like the chicken before the egg, kind of here, I just wanted to bring this before to see if we come up with any ideas, I mean, I think the board would definitely have energy to do this if we had a carrier that was actually, you know, seriously interested, and, you know, we could put a letter of intent out or something and then make it happen, but if it really isn't a carrier interested, then it's kind of a waste of money, so...
Nate, you got a comment on it?
I can't assure you that. Okay, sure. Yes, as we're trying to obviously get air service back in the area, we know that last year, Governor Cicilline passed a bill for rural development, air service, that, that bill was not, it was passed, but it wasn't funded. If they decide to fund that in upcoming legislature, there'll be a million dollars of subsidiary funding out there, so that air service can happen on a regional basis in Nevada, and so that would include our airport. As we're going out there trying to communicate with air services to come back into our area and use our airport, under Part 139, you would have to have it, but we wouldn't go back into Part 139, we'd go back to 135. 135, the difference is you don't have to have TSA, you don't have to have security at the airport for that, and then it would, it would be all the aircraft, 17 passengers or less would qualify for that, and that would be that regional air, air service. That air service would encompass something that would maybe go from Reno, Winnebago, Elko, Ely, Las Vegas, that type of regional stuff, but, the policy stands with those carriers is ARF is required, and, and under their policy, not the policy from the FAA or their standard from the, because our airport is under general aviation, that's how we're classified as, is general aviation. At one time, we were Part 139, and we had to have it, but we're general aviation now, and so, if we get air service back, it would be Part 135, but their policy as the carrier requires them to have ARF, and so, just like some other scenarios that we've had, in the last two or three months, we've had ARF services requested by the military, the British military brought their helicopters here, and as a, as a fly-through, we filled them up, and they requested ARF. The US Army just brought 10 helicopters here on January 3rd, and they requested ARF, and so, it was, it was provided, again, just a reminder, we have the facility, we have the truck, we don't have any certified personnel, and so, that's what the Airport Advisory Board has felt like we need that for those services, and so that's why they went to, Commissioner put on to bring it before the board and discuss it.
Anybody got any comments or questions?
So, Lance, they, they requested ARF, and we couldn't supply, but they came anyway. ARF, do, do we have people who are bypassing us because we don't need that certification at this time?
First question that's asked when they call is, do you have ARF?
Right, but you have people that are, are not utilizing us because of it, we have people bypasses.
And even the current carriers, as we put that out there, when we lost our ARF services back with those individuals that were from the ELC building that were trained and certified, I put the notice out to all those commercial carriers that use our airport now, the concern they had was that, under their policy, we have commercial carriers now that, that require ARF, but they're still coming in landing, they're still utilizing, that's...
They're still utilizing, but... When I spoke with the FAA this morning, with Holly Dixon, she said, because UPS, FedEx, are only two passengers, ARF is not required, that's why they're coming in here, because they would not come in at all if that was a requirement, that's coming from her.
Yeah.
So... Again, that's just a company policy that those companies have, they've decided to continue to serve our area and come in, but, yeah.
And what, what companies are you talking specifically here?
The American Med Flight, the UPS flight that comes in, and then both the two Med Flight operators.
Well, no, they haven't served, but, don't service the...
Because of that, because we don't have the ARF?
Oh, no, they're, they continue to do it.
But, so, so we haven't had anybody that, that refused to use our airport because we didn't have the ARF certification?
Just the, the carrier that we petitioned to go out, that, if that regional service comes, they're the ones that said, you must have ARF if we come to your airport.
So, so if we did get into talks with them, we could, we could go achieve the certification, we could still go through that, but other than that, we haven't lost any business because we're not ARF certified right now.
And again, with those that have come, we say that we have ARF, we supply a truck, I turned to Mr. North and say, we need a truck on that day, and he brings personal, personnel out, and the truck is there. They're not certified.
They're not certified, they're capable.
Yeah, they know how to operate it, they're just not certified.
They don't know how to fly a fire system.
So, we're offering the service, we don't have people bypassing us, I, personally, I don't see us spending the money at this time, but if, we do have an operator that expresses interest and, and signs an intent to come, then, then I think that would be the time that we would make the investment and achieve that certification.
And one thing that we are doing is on a monthly basis, I get with Brett, we go out there and we operate the equipment, we, we utilize it, we run the pumps, and so the equipment is being still, you know, maintained and whatnot, so, so they're willing to have that service, so, but right now, so far, those that have been requested, we, I contact the, the Fire Department, they supply the, the truck, supply the, the personnel, and what we do with that is that, the, the standard is you come 30 minutes prior to them landing, just in case they're close to the airport, they have a situation, and then they stay 30 minutes after that, they, they take off and leave, just in case there's a situation, so...
Now, is, oh, I'm sorry, no...
No, no, man.
Now, is that a, a service that, that they pay for over and above standard airport usage, or is that included?
No, it's included, I don't know.
It's like the last time they came in and they purchased $15,000 for the jet fuel, so...
As far as the firefighting side of it, I worry more about these fuel trucks filling up the convenience stations, convenience stores, when people walk around smoking, because that's going to be a structure with fuel involved, that's all the pain is.
I had, I had a question in regards to, who, who was it that inquired whether or not we had ARF that was thinking about utilizing us as part of their, their rotation on stops?
Boutique out of Moab, Utah was the outfit that was to be involved with that.
Were they very serious?
Yeah, they're really serious, as soon as they get the funding, it's a... Yeah, they're really serious, as soon as they get the funding, if the, if the state comes to us the funding, they're gonna put a bid in for it.
Well then, I would like for you to keep the county abreast then.
Sure.
Or have, have Commissioner Bodan, you know, the requirements or whatever.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Nicole, maybe add on the next agenda that just wrapped a letter or a letter of intent with our signature that's, you know, lays out that says if, if a carrier is interested in coming that this, you know, and is a, you know, has a ser- serious interest that, you know, we will, you know, entertain the offer and would provide ARF at that, at that time if, if such negotiations went that way, just so it's in writing and they know we're, you know, we're serious about doing it, but you know, we need someone who's serious about coming, if that makes sense, and then at least it's in writing, Lance can have that to send off as he's prospecting these people and, and they know that, you know, we're on record saying we'll definitely work with them if, if they're serious.
This was, you had your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to make a comment to the fire commission that this is a airport service that's requiring these firefighter services, so is this something that you want to look at as this should be partially funded by the county to assist with paying for this training and these services, because it's truly a service required by the airport for these services? Just a thought for in the future when we look at, because it is quite pricey to go ahead and provide that training and maintain the equipment and all that.
It's gonna be part of the negotiations as far as what, what they lay out for us, I believe, but you know, maybe, maybe they'll put up a little money for it, or, you know, have to figure that out.
Yeah, because the training right now, the closest facility is San Bernardino. It's a forty dollar class, so your motel, you're gonna have motels, you know, the classes, eight hundred and ninety-five. No, that's Montana, it's a thousand thirty-five, it's on the.
You've got, yeah.
Yeah.
You've got some of the costs here.
Thirteen ninety-five per person, and then you have to re-certify yearly. So that's, it's not just a one-time cost, it's ongoing.
If it, if it makes sense, you know, it's a constant cost, but if we can, it'll be nothing but a benefit to us to get more than one commercial people coming in and out of here, that really helps with our economic development and growth in our.
Something that's reliable, because that's where things went downhill, was that the last company was not reliable, we couldn't get the ridership up to where it was needed to be. But I, I'd like to inquire about the Part 135. You say we're general aviation now? Okay, so Part 135 is where passenger planes of seventeen?
Seventeen passengers or less, following, under that requirement?
Yeah, and it goes by seats, doesn't it? So they, they can't be capable of more.
More than that, yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, and we wouldn't want to be 139, because then we'd have to have TSA and all that stuff, security and stuff, so. Yeah, we need that before we were 139, so we would file for 135. And when I spoke with the FAA last year, the meeting that I was with them last year, our 139 was simply suspended, it wasn't revoked, and so it's be real simple with the letter, I request a reinstatement, they would come out, they would inspect our facility and whatnot and everything, and we would be reinstated, so it's real simple to, to have happen, it's, so, yeah.
Lance, the, the last time when we were operating with, with a commercial carrier and receiving subsidy from the essential air program, if I, if memory serves correct, we were per passenger, one of the highest subsidized airports in the country as far as cost per passenger.
The number one highest, yes.
Yeah, the number one highest, so the monies that the state is, is proposing is, is it enough money to make it feasible for an operator?
The initial request was a million dollars, and I, I don't know obviously how the legislature's gonna go with that this year, again, the bill was passed, but it wasn't funded, and so if that funding comes through, then a million dollars would be shared amongst all those other, those, you know, airports and whatnot, and so that'll go out there, but they, they've asked that the state be involved with this, to get involved with the aviation side of, of the state. It's been petitioned by lobbyists and whatnot, how much aviation puts into the state, and so as soon as that gets funded, then there'll be an opportunity for that regional air service. That's the only really way that it's gonna happen with that subsidization.
So it's a million dollars for all rural airports to, to share, because if memory serves, under the essential air program, we, that was, that subsidy was considerably more than a million, wasn't it?
A lot more than.
Yeah, considerably more than a million, several million, and so if we're splitting a million with all the other airports, I just.
But again, we're talking about, you know, if, if, but if two or three passengers come from Alcoa, two or three come from Ely, two or three from Winnebago, that, you know, we, we get to share that opportunity for that air service to make money. So that's why they're really petitioning in that format, and so.
Cool.
Yeah, and I'll get more of an update, and I'll be able to come back to the board, I go to a meeting here in about a month or so with the other airports, so I'll give you an update.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to. Ask some questions, elaborate on that a little bit. So you're, you, you would get funding for an air service to come in, but there's really not funding to operate it here with the county's operation? No, it's just for, for the air service. So right now, I would like to see updated airport plan, I think the last one I had was like twenty-four, so I'm sure you have had an annual level that you're certified at, correct?
Four response?
Yeah, emergency plan.
Every five years.
Every five years. So we're, we're.
We're scheduled to have that done this year.
I'd like to see what cert, what certification we have, because our requirements, and how can we, you know, try to meet them requirements here with the training city and the county. I, I think it's very important that instead of it's talked about, we should move on it a little bit and at least be up to par for what we're doing. Let's say if, if you do go beyond what you're doing now, then, you know, there is gonna be a cost involved, and that's always, it's always changing, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hours, it's not only the training that Brett was talking about, she got some in-house training too, but it sort of takes a lot of hours.
Right, but some of that also can be done online.
Yeah, we can do. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, there's, there's other avenues to do, it's just like, we just got to play with them.
You know, we, we rounded this out, and I think, one more question for you, would this be a budgetary item for the next fiscal year?
We can certainly discuss it within the budget workshop.
Yeah, and this was a discussion item, we brought it up, and Travis, everybody.
Is everyone good with a letter for the next agenda, just so Lance has something that he can at least say we look at it, he's talking to folks?
That's not a agenda, can we do?
It'll be the next agenda, just to put it all together.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's.
Okay.
All right, so that's fine.
I'm good, everyone else?
Anybody else who wanna make a, a comment on what these gentlemen have given to us so far?
Yeah, just, I'm sorry, just, Chairman, this is the airport advisory board, Philip, that we bring before the board, that Travis bring before the board, they felt the importance level of it, and so that's why it was brought this way.
That's fine, thank you, thank you very much.
Thanks you guys, thank you.
Okay. No more comment on that, that was discussion only, we'll move on to item number six. Item number six is discussion and update, an invitation from the city meeting to evaluate the contract for fire protection services and discuss potential modifications to terms activations.
This is just to notify the county commission that the city of Uli did reach out to us to evaluate the contract for fire protection services between the city and county. When this contract was entered into, it was anticipated that there would be a reopener to discuss how things are going and to discuss what kind of tweaks might be needed, if any, and so I'm just notifying you that I did receive that notice, present to the contract, I'll be putting together a team and we'll be coming back to the fire commission with any changes that may be a result of that process.
It's not just finances, I mean, we've had some meetings this year, we've seen there's a lot of little things that could have been incorporated in that document, so we'll brainstorm that, hold it together and bring it back to the commission.
Okay.
Sounds good.
And just for the record, Fire Chief Brett and I sat down and went through the EMS agreement per the discussion that we had with the deputy district attorney to kind of go through and what we thought, so just.
Okay, it'll be, today we form, you guys come back to us, that's fine. Okay, anybody got any other questions on that particular item that we're going to? Okay, we'll move on then. Item seven, in the fire district is discussion for possible action, the approval of minutes from the following fire commission meetings, the special meeting on December twenty-third two thousand nineteen and the regular meeting on January eighth two thousand and twenty. Any additions, changes, or corrections?
I'll be abstaining from the minutes for January eighth because I was absent.
Okay, with that being said, I'll go for a motion, if there's anything, I'll go for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve the special December thirtieth two thousand nineteen and January eighth of two thousand and twenty.
Motion by Lori and a second by Ian, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, with Shane abstaining from the January eighth. The last item we have here is item number eight. Item number eight is discussion for possible action, approval of a motion to close the fire commission meeting pursuant to NRS two four one point oh three oh, to have a closed personnel session for fire district, for district fire chief Brett North to consider his character, alleged misconduct, professional competence, physical or mental health in order to evaluate his job performance in, at the conclusion of his six-month probationary period. Brett, you have the option if you'd like to close the meeting, or you could have it.
Did you wanna do this later? I'll reopen the fire district later.
No, the reason, the reason we didn't do it was to move on to, it wasn't.
No, no, I understand that, but.
So we don't have to move the public out now and have them come in.
You're all mic'd, you're all mic'd, and the whole community's here to hear the rest of these items.
So you speak more convenient.
To open it, the conclusion of the meeting, if Brett wants to stick around or come back for that.
You okay with that, Brett?
Yeah.
I really wanna do it, yeah, we can even give you a call.
That's why I brought that up.
Take three seconds, give me a call, they come back.
So does he need a motion to trail that for later?
Yeah.
I need a motion to trail the, the.
I'll move to, I'll move that we delay item eight to the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ian, a second by Lori, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so we will address that later on. At this time, to conclude the fire commission meeting for now, and we have public comment on what's just now been discussed, is there any public comment on the items that we've discussed here during this fire commission meeting? Please come forward.
Good morning, I just have one concern when they were discussing as far as the ARF and the report as far as having individuals that are knowledgeable on how to run the equipment and going out and willing to do that, but as far as the concerns on liability on the county or the, or the airport, if we have a catastrophic event and something goes sideways, what does that look like? That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment on fire district? Last call, one more time, any other public comment? Hearing none and seeing none, we will close the, the fire commission meeting and go back and reopen the regularly scheduled meeting, past the nine thirty, but we had a nine thirty on Page Street, nine thirty, certification of roads and proposed ordinances. Item one is a public hearing, discussion for possible action, the White Pine County Board of County Commissioners will take public comment and consider the approval of the certification of roads within White Pine County pursuant to NRS three six five point five five zero. Bill called, we'll come with you. Bill?
Good morning.
Good morning, Bill.
This is the certification for roads, we do this annually, this is for the roads of, of last year, what we're doing. Now, Mark here with my map, if there's any questions on which roads or county roads. The overall county mileage has stayed the same, and the, the roads that are eligible for fuel tax are, have stayed the same. The only difference we have is what we brought before the commission, where we reduced the miles on the Long Valley Road, asphalt miles there, we increased some miles on two twelve Poline and Georgetown, and then the city increased some asphalt miles on Mill Street and Belford. So that, those exact numbers have been reported to the RTC, and they've approved them. The reason we do that is public transit funds are split with the city based on asphalt miles, so there was an increase for the city in funds, there's what that relates to, there'll be a decrease to the county in funds based on those swapping on asphalt miles. Other than that, everything is the same.
Anyone have any questions, Bill? Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the public.
Public hearing.
That's a public hearing, does anyone have any questions or any comments on the presentation on the roads? If you have anything that stay on the roads, or what Bill just gave us, hearing none and seeing none, we'll move on?
We gotta approve it.
I'll look for a motion to approve.
Who to approve?
Motion by Travis, second by Ian. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion, no, just thank you. Item two is public hearing, this is the second reading, discussion for possible action, the White Pine County Board of County Commissioners will take public comment and consider approval of ordinance five oh seven, bill number zero one point zero eight point two zero two zero, and ordinance amending title of, of the White Pine County Code regarding the speed limit within the town of McGill. This is a public hearing, does anyone have any comments on the, on this hearing about the speed limits of McGill? Anybody? I think we discussed this at the last meeting, the sheriff brought to us the twenty mile an hour speed limit, is that right, Mike?
Yes.
So, this is an action item, and if no one has any comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the, the speed limit. I think we agreed to twenty miles an hour in McGill.
I would like to see, we have this in McGill, we have this in Rhode Island, I would like to see gateway signage on these towns, on the main highways coming in, that state, that most otherwise posted, the speed limit is at twenty miles an hour.
But one thing that is, does not stay at twenty miles an hour is Fourth Street, Main Street in McGill, because that is a state highway, we have a state highway regulates that speed limit.